I'm gonna call on the folks in order that they signed up. And so, the first person is Paul Beck.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, Council. I just have one question. And the question is, why is the city assessor keeping two sets of books for assessing? One, he puts out on the Internet that anybody can grab. And then, the other one, he keeps for his own personal use. And if you want samples of it, I have them. I will be glad to pass them on to you later on.
The city assessor's authority comes from the state on what he must be required to do. I just wanted to let you know that that authority comes from the state.
Well, sure, but did you ever hear of the company called Enron down in Texas?
Of course.
They had two sets of books, and it's called Cooked Books. What they use for internal use and what they put out for public information were two different things. And the assessor is doing that right here with the assessing records.
Madam Mayor.
Madam Mayor.
Beck, yes, I'm gonna call on Councilwoman Bell to me.
Mr. Beck, you said that you had evidence of that.
Yes, I do.
Would you please turn that over to the city attorney so that she and the police department can see what needs to be done?
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And the only name, I don't see a first name. I just see McLand here.
Margaret.
Margaret McLand.
Everybody.
That's all right. We did get your data that you provided us here, too, so thank you.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
I know, you folks are here from Emerald Lake Village.
Yeah.
And we appreciate you waiting to come to this meeting to speak. And sorry that it had to also be the liquor violations, which I didn't anticipate when I originally asked you to switch over. So, thank you for being patient.
Oh, sure, you're welcome. And thank you for this opportunity for the council and the mayor. My name is Margaret McLand, and I'm the lake chair of Emerald Lakes Village. And I'm really here to represent 550 homes. First, we want to thank the city for listening to us and for the help that we are receiving after our meetings with Brian Murphy last year. We have discovered that projects are in progress. And the pictures you see before you are pictures depicting what our water quality used to look like, pictures one and two, I numbered them just because I don't want to spend a lot of time pointing. And then, three through nine represent what we've experienced over the last few years. The six lakes in our community were developed as lakes, even though the city engineers like to call them retention ponds. So, we really like to think of them as lakes. They've always been utilized that way. They've been advertised, sold, and even more importantly, taxed as lake property. Oakland County also tests our beach sites because they view us as a lake. And the point we really want to make is that the continuing decline in our water quality has tremendous consequences. Number one would be our property values. A decreased tax base means less revenue for the city, and none of us need that at this time. There are new studies from Kansas City where they actually put a monetary value on the decline of water quality, where property value can decline about 15%. I've enclosed the article in your packet from the Muskegon Chronicle. And even in a good economy, with the pictures you see before you, you really could not sell a home. Number two, the consequence would be a major health concern. I don't know if any of you have heard about the blue-green toxic algae, but it is a common threat coming into our state. They've had sightings of it on the Great Lakes. There have been reported deaths of animals and children becoming sick. There's really not a good way to test for this blue-green algae, and it is a threat. I just attended a U of M aquaculture conference where they talked a lot about that as well. But after our meetings with Brian Murphy, we asked him specifically to help us by cleaning our storm drains one time per year and problematic drains twice a year. And there were about 14 ones that we thought were problems. Currently, the schedule is that the storm drains are cleaned once every three years. You might ask, why are we focusing on storm drains? That is because over the last three years, we've spent a lot of resource, time, and energy investigating why our water quality is declining because we're not trying to blame just one area. We've hired professionals. We've had professional water analysis. I've enclosed a list of the professionals that we've utilized over the past three years, fish biologists, water specialists. And all those professionals agree that stormwater runoff is the major contribution to our poor water quality. If you note specifically in pictures three and nine, you will see this type of green slime that's coming directly from the storm drain after a rain. Because what happens is the rain pushes through the catch basin containing rotting material that sits there, and it produces algae in the water. The other thing I'd like to point out is that we have two lakes that do not have any storm drains. Their water quality is superior to the ones with storm drains, and we have the water data to prove this. Another concern we have is as the development has progressed north of us, we get more and more stormwater into our drains. We have one lake, a 10-acre lake with nine drains. And also, the creek that runs parallel, the Renshaw Ferry Drain runs parallel to our lakes. And the nice thing about this whole water system is that we're all part of the Clinton River watershed, and our lakes drain into this creek when our water level comes up high. Well, if you look at picture 10 and you see how high that creek is, it doesn't allow for our lakes to drain properly. We're all fearful of flooding. The pictures 11 through 13 show pictures of erosion that is occurring over there as people on the creek are losing their property. So, that is a major concern. We have also witnessed creek water backflowing into our lake during the times of high rain, and that's not a good thing for water quality as well. And we most certainly appreciate the city asking for stimulus packet money. Am I out of town?
Continue.
And we know that's a long-range project, and that's why we're specifically asking the council to please support the cleaning of the drains one time per year, the problem drains twice a year. And as I finish, I just want you to know that we are doing everything we can. I've put in educational packet of material for the residents. I've talked to Jennifer Lawson. She's provided us with that. We're part of the Clinton River watershed. We're doing everything we can. We don't put all the blame here. We're just asking for some help, and I really wanted you to see what's happened to our property. So, thank you for your concern.
Thank you. And I know Mr. Diener, who I'm gonna call on next, has some additional things to say. Okay, thank you. Mr. Diener? David Diener?
We'll call it Deener tonight.
Oh, sorry. I'm sorry.
You people don't have an easy night, do you? My name is Dave Deener, and I'm the president of the Emerald Lakes Homeowners and Village Association.
You wanna move over?
I can do that.
Yeah, a little bit more.
Better?
Yep. Thank you.
What I'm asking for this evening doesn't cost anything. I'm asking you to help us with two-way communication between the ELV homeowners board and our city departments. It seems to be very difficult for some city departments to include us in what they have going on relating to the village. At times, they seem to be very wary of even talking to us. The potential exists to change our six lakes into swamps, and you have seen some of that tonight. We also are at risk at times to flood 200 homes. The ELV board answers to 550 homes, about 1,500 residents. The communication between the board and the residents is solid. Jennifer Lawson was invited to one of our homeowners' meetings to give a presentation and was pleasantly surprised to find over 200 people in attendance. Mr. Brian Murphy has been very gracious and has met with members of the ELV board twice this past year. The first meeting was to enlist his aid in solving drain problems involving South Boulevard and John R. And the second meeting was the one we asked for more frequent cleaning of our street drain sumps. The county drain commission people tell me that three of our city departments had met to discuss our drain situation, and we received no information about that from the city. I assume the meeting related by the county was a result of Mr. Murphy's involvement. We have no idea what the meeting covered or other than it was concerning our village. Recently, a crew was noticed taking samples from the street drains. They informed that they're a consulting firm and were hired by the city to take samples over a 10-month period. I can guarantee you that had the residents known that you had done that, they would have applauded you. We generally do not ask the city for help, and we're thrilled when we discover you're providing extra services. We first heard it in a council meeting and read later in the paper that the city had put our street drains on the president's stimulus package list. Residents called to ask exactly what was the city planning to do, and I had to tell them, of course, I had no clue. For it to be on that list, the project needs to be shovel-ready. And until we saw the crew taking samples, we were not aware of any studies concerning our village. Several other residents asked if the city was going to use the stimulus money to fill the lakes in with dirt. Think about that. I thought it was a legitimate question. It's a well-known fact, if you don't keep people informed, they're going to make up something to fit the situation. And usually, when they do that, they're wrong. A prime example is that stimulus package. You have a ready-to-go-out-for-bids project, and we know none of the details, so that question is valid. Our board has a lot of testing history and other pertinent data I would think would be valuable in making decisions. The lake experts we consult with regularly use our data to help in their investigations. The elected board itself is made up, what I think, of what I think is an impressive assortment of talent. We have two educators, retired marine lieutenant colonel, two members with a degree in biology. One of those has a master's and is also taught at Wayne State, and that's Margaret, our lakes rep that you just listened to. We have financial people, administrative assistants, an engineering manager, and a project manager. Our board has a vast knowledge base concerning the lakes and the drains. I cannot believe our city wouldn't want to tap into that storehouse. We have a proven communications pipeline with our residents, and I can't believe you wouldn't want us to keep our 550 homes informed about the nice things that you do for us. And you do do nice things for the city residents, you really do. Thank you. When the engineering department or streets and drains are working on a project or just cleaning a drain, it would really help us if you could keep us informed so that we could pass the word on to our residents. They are interested, and more than that, they're really concerned. But they guess a lot, and so do I. The ELV homeowners association has not been sitting back waiting to be rescued. We're out in front, spending a lot of money, time, and effort, including the education of our residents, to correct our lake problems. Again, it's two-way communication that I'm after tonight. I genuinely thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you. We appreciate you coming. Next, we have our county commissioner, Gary McGalvery, who would like to address us. We appreciate you coming this evening and...
My pleasure.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, members of council, first of all, I'd like to introduce myself. I'm Gary McGalvery. I'm the newest county commissioner that represents the southeastern part of Troy. I look forward to being able to work with all of you on any county issues, all of the elected officials, as well as all of the city folks. Anything I can do to help out, try to move things along on the county level, I'll be more than happy to do. Just a couple of things real quick that I'd like to mention. We are trying to try to get a little bit more open government, so what we're doing is we're gonna try to get some evening meetings at the county level. So many people work during the day, they can't come to our meetings. So, I'm gonna push for that first. If that doesn't work, at least try to get some kind of a webcast or cable TV avenue where people are a little bit more accessible to that. We're also looking at any new way possible to help out in this economy. There's so many homes that are being foreclosed on, people unemployed, without health insurance, so we're gonna look at different ways we can help, any little way that may be. Also, Representative Nolenberg mentioned the three-year budget. I was very pleased when County Executive Works Patterson announced that he was gonna go to the three-year budget. I was very impressed when we got there and found the two-year budget, because as most of you know, I was a councilman in Madison Heights for many years, and we had a one-year budget, probably like you do. And it helps so much to kind of project out and make sure that we don't get in those tight predicaments with this kind of an economy. Also, just make mention real quick, I mentioned your city attorney. I'm very pleased at the way that you handle your liquor violations, being involved with Mass Knights for as many years as I was. We don't do that, and I'm gonna go back and recommend that they start doing that. It makes the store owners answer to somebody. Unfortunately, so many times, they don't, and things just happen year and year again. So, I'd like to thank you for that process. It does well.
Thank you. And if there's anything that the city can do to help Madison Heights with getting that set up, we've been doing that for a number of years, and I think it does help.
Yes, it does.
It does help. Mayor Potom Hauerak, did you have a question for...
Oh, I was just gonna thank you for coming and glad to have you at our meetings anytime. And it sounds like you've got some good goals there. I like the idea of the evening meetings, and I really like the idea of streaming it on the Internet if possible, too, or at least archiving it. That's great. Anything we can do to help, let us know.
I appreciate that. Thank you so much.
And the county does have their new email system that Works Patterson mentioned at his State of the County, where they're sending out things. And I know I get regular updates and kinds of things, but there are things that citizens can sign up for, too, where they want to know a specific area, that they want to know from the website. Do you want to talk...
Oakgov.com is the county website. You can get just a load of different information, one in particular, foreclosed homes. It's always best that you don't let it get to that stage where you're past due on your payments. The county has people that work as a third-party counselor that will work with your mortgage company to try to come with some resolution so that you don't lose your house. So, that's also on the website, but you can find just about anything at all on the website. And don't wait too long. I mean, get in touch with them early, and they'll be more than happy to work with you.
Okay. Thank you for coming. Councilwoman Broomfield, I think, has a question or comment?
Not for this gentleman.
Oh, all right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our previous speakers, normally, we take people as they come, but I didn't want them to leave, feeling that some of the things they shared fell on deaf ears. I appreciate all your efforts in what you're doing here, and I would ask if Mr. Murphy and you, both of you, could get together and maybe work out... It's hard to make sure that all the homeowners associations get the correct information and all that, but this is a big problem, and it sounds like you've already built a relationship with Mr. Murphy. And I'd like to see more of that for the benefit of the city on both ends. I don't know what could be worked out, but the logistics of communication.
Okay, thank you. And we have Marvin Reinhardt, which is to speak. And then, did I also see, yes, how are you? Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor. I appreciate talking tonight, talking about your lake project. I'm just waiting for some of you guys' foreclosed homes so I can buy them up, so I can join the, you know, be a little bit closer to the subject, because I understand, you know, how deep those lakes used to be and how they were filled in with stuff to make them as shallow as they are today. I lost two of my friends drowning in the gravel pits, so I understand those pits very well. Also, I'd like to say something. I'm glad you guys get down on these people selling liquors, but you understand, once again, you bust a $7 man at the counter, okay? That's really brave. That's just like our policemen. They're real fast busting the guy on the dog on the porch, but a guy can come into town here, rip off the Red Roof Inn, eight cameras between here and the expressway. They can't find them, because they're probably busting everybody for selling liquor by mistake. Because by looking at Lambert's blog once in a while, it looks like it's a crime wave all over Troy, like there's reams and reams of crime going on. I don't understand where Lambert finds this stuff. I call his number, and it's the police department, so he might have an inside track. Two, I'd like to congratulate this Bill, whatever his name is, I can't really pronounce his name, I'm not good with names, because I butcher them. So, his name is C-O-W-G-E-R. He thinks he's gonna get all his murals in the Troy Transit Center that we haven't even built yet. So, apparently, he's already retiring on his accomplishments. That's nice to hear. I also tried to get water quality today from your lakes and all the water, and the woman gave me a little piece of paper, the form. So, I didn't know how to fill it out, so I emailed it to all my senators and asked them, "Please fill out this form." And they say, "What is this?" I said, "This is the form the city of Troy gives people." Now, I got an IQ like you wouldn't believe, okay? I know, and I can't fill the form out. So, Senator Peters down there, he's trying to fill it out. Mark's trying to fill it out. Nobody can fill it out, about what question to ask, what the water quality is in this state. But I've asked the Canadian, you know, and then the Michigan National Resources wants to know, because I asked them the question, because the water in this city is a Michigan resource, like the mayor says. Since I live where I live, I complain to the state. I don't come to no city thing because I was told, because where I live, only the state handles it. And when the police comes into my neighborhood, I call the state police because they're trespassing. Or does that place pay an extra fee to have the police come through that area? That's all, you know, that's part of what I like to know. And I don't know if any of these buildings in Troy have been built with these Chinese plywood, drywall. It smells like rotten eggs. I don't know if the city even cares whether or not where the construction of these houses are made. And two Fridays ago, I got a phone call, and it was kind of funny. He said, and I called him a pepper nose, but he might not have been. He said he was Nelson, and I'm spreading all types of rumors about him. I don't have to spread no rumors about a loser, okay? Because I used to live in Idiot City. He called it Elliot, I called it idiot, right next to Dumb Dog. And I assure you, it's a nice city, but don't tell them you're out of state. I lost a set of tires in one day. Get your plates changed quick. I'm just, that's how they are in Baltimore. There's 4 million people where there's only 80,000 where we are. And I really don't have much to say, because I'm still getting stuff back from these different government agencies about why the city of Troy is turning into pollution city. I'm asking that, ask, where in Troy is not pollution? I got people in Claussen want to sue the city of Troy for air pollution going over their city. I'm financing it. I got lots of money to throw away. I hope you guys, because I don't think Troy's in trouble. If Troy was in trouble, the council would have 24-hour meetings going on to make sure that we're not in trouble. That's when it swept. Because when I worked for the UAW, and I had to make some minor adjustments to GM management, okay, that was my job, management, ah, I don't know what you call it, but they accused me of throwing them down elevator shafts, downstairs and stuff. But that's just rumors, and nobody can accuse of rumors. But I'll be back in two weeks, and it's gonna get worse, just because I don't think you guys care about Troy. If you cared about Troy, you wouldn't worry about 16 Mile, because 16 Mile is pollution city. Thank you, Mark.
Mr. Savage? Nice to see you. We haven't seen you in a while.
No, I've been around, but not here, I guess.
Good evening.
I suppose I've been, oh, well, good evening, all councilors. Nice to see you all again. So, I've been getting my news from newspaper, and this is why it prompted me to come here tonight, because I read a little article here regarding a difference of opinion between Mr. Richardson, the representative for the developer of the pavilions, and Mr. Hauerak, the representative of the citizens of Troy. And there's a couple of quotes here that, "The truth of the matter is the owner overpaid for the property, and the economy went south." I guess that was Mr. Hauerak's comment. And Mr. Richardson's comment response to that was, "From my perspective, it's rumor and not substantiated by the owner," diamond of Troy. But it was interesting to note that Mr. Richardson did not deny the accuracy of Mr. Hauerak's remark. And as spokesman for the development, I would think he should know whether that was accurate or not. And, no, Mr. Richardson, of course, is representing out-of-town investors, and as investors, their interest naturally is making money. And Mr. Hauerak, who has been around this city for a long time, his interest is in representing the good of the city of Troy and its residents. And I would think he's very well-qualified to speak on residents' behalf. Now, about the pavilions, about two years ago, I was asked what I thought of the Monarch Project, which I'm looking at in a similar light. I thought the concept was good, but it was 10 years too late. And even though I like the idea of a living, working, and shopping, or possibly in the same development, that's good, I'm not so sure that it's good for Troy. But anyway, since then, the city government has spent many hours and, no doubt, lots of money negotiating PUDs on, and I don't remember the names of these developments, was it Johnard and Big Beaver, where the CBS now stands, and another development on Jar, and I think it was Square Lake Road. And I think that was the one that I read in the paper was abandoned. And the other, I don't know whether it's abandoned, but it may never be finished. And now, after months of negotiations, the pavilions hinges on the state of Muskegon throwing in $20 million. Now, the state government, at the moment, is in bad shape. It's laying off workers, it's freeing prison inmates, and making all sorts of cuts. And now, an out-of-state developer wants bailout money for a shopping center in this, one of the country's most affluent communities. And I don't think that's gonna fly. And I don't think it should, because the state that the country is in, there are a lot more important projects than the pavilions. Now, in my mind, the basis of the free enterprise system is supply and demand. If you drive around Troy, it is obvious that the supply of buildings is years ahead of the demand, both residential, commercial, and industrial. In the unlikely event that these PUD projects did get finished, and they did get occupied, and they were successful, their success would be at the expense of existing area businesses that have been operating without taxpayer help. There is no indication that the demand for what these projects supply will increase anytime soon. So, we are not dealing with a supply and demand system here. The supply of buildings, I think, is gonna take, in my mind, five years minimum to catch up. So, it would be easy for everybody to sit back and blame the economy for all their problems. And I hear particularly business people, some of the top ones, oh, can I get...
You're almost done. I know. Go ahead.
Trying, but how could we have known this would happen, that the economy would tank? Well, I knew. Years ago, when I heard radio ads saying, "Come and see us, we'll sign you to a mortgage, no money down, bad credit, interest only," I knew it was going south. And yes, you can afford that $500,000 house, even if you only make $40,000 a year. Something was wrong. It didn't make sense. So, we all knew that this was going to tank, but nobody tried to stop it. And now, we're going down the same path. So, in my mind, it would seem obvious that the Monarch Project is dead, because the people who are building, were gonna build the Monarch, have pretty well put on hold other projects that they had in Royal Oak. The Pavilion Project, I think, is dead. But when all the dust has settled, will these developers be prepared to reimburse... But when all the dust is settled, will these developers be prepared to reimburse the city for all the wasted time and expense that they put into this? I don't think so. Okay, almost thinks. Now, I know I'm sometimes critical and maybe even a little cynical, but I also try to be constructive. So let's go to a plan that will work, that is doable, a project that I know there is demand for. And that is, let's go back to Plan A, the Civic Center Park. We've sat through all these discussions of things that have tanked, and before any of this, before the Monarch Wayback, we talked about a Civic Center, a downtown for Troy, one that everybody wanted. I'm still waiting for that skating rink. It's not going to happen at the pavilions. So I think the plan is a good one. I think we can do it, and we should do it. And hopefully, Troy families will enjoy their own outdoor skating park next winter. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Savage. Is there anyone else that I missed? I'm sure they'll be back for it.
I just want to tell you, the kids sitting behind me were very proud to be able to hear the liquor license. They said, when do they hold this? How often? And so I said, well, just come to the council meeting. You're welcome to. And they said their teacher sent them this time, but they were very interested in the liquor license. And, but I came up here to tell you that we do a lot for the Boys and Girls Club. They have the Taste of Troy, they have River Cuttings, they have jars all over, they do other dinners, lunches, and things like that. But my main goal is that, I'd like to tell everybody and people listening, that Troy People Concerned are having their fourth annual pasta dinner, which is going to be a little different, and they're going to have music with it, and it's on March 28th. And dinner will start at 5:00 p.m., and they have a live auction at 6:30, and it's on Big Beaver United Methodist Church, which is 3753 John R. Road, and it's $25. Now, my reason for coming up here and saying this is that the Boys and Girls Club, it's nice, is keep putting things in for the Boys and Girls Club, but if the parents can't pay any of their bills, we won't need a Boys and Girls Club, because they're going to move out of town. They're going to move to a state where they're going to be able to pay their bills, find some kind of job. So we won't need those Boys and Girls Club, unless we help their parents, and that's what the Troy People Concerned do. They help them get out there and pay some of their bills, help them even talk to the city about paying their water bills. They'll help them in that way. And the reason this brought me up is that when my daughter was going door-to-door campaigning with me, one guy came to the door and was crying with her and said, "I can't even meet my electric bill this month." And he says, "I can't do it." She came down to me, and she goes, "Mom, do you have your checkbook with you?" Well, I didn't at the time. I had just my purse, because she was riding. And she says, "Let's go home. I want to write a check to pay this man's bill." Now, I feel like we have more with the Troy People Concerned, but not that many show up. And I don't think it's hurting anybody to say, hey, let's try, let's help their parents out for a change, instead of just, like, the Taste of Troy could be one year for Troy People Concerned, the next year for Boys and Girls Club. We've got to keep their homes, so that these kids have a home besides just a play area. This is what I came up here for. And if anybody would like tickets, I'm sure they can flood Councilman Harlowick's email address or phone number like crazy. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Then we'll continue on with our regular...